7:00 PM, we'll call to order the City of Milton Common Council meeting on Tuesday, September 20th. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Dave's Ace Hardware and the Piggly Wiggly.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve all the agenda. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and we have an agenda. Number three is public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And we have Bonnie Pals of 28 East Maple Lane signed in to speak. Would you like to speak now or at the time when the item you're interested in comes up?
Oh, now.
Okay, great. Everybody says it's now. So you just have to go up to the podium? Thank you.
It looks like it. I have a water bill that is extremely high because I had a couple leaks. And I guess it was on the agenda once before and I missed it. I guess just I didn't get the acknowledgement or whatever, but I was wondering if the council would reconsider getting me on the agenda to reconsider. Because the bill is so extremely high and I am a senior and I'm on a fixed budget. And I will never get that bill caught up. So I don't know what else to do about it.
Well, I'm wondering if you could schedule an appointment to come in and meet with me and I can go over it with you and then we can see if it should be put on the agenda. Would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so if you just want to leave your phone number up here and then I can give you a call.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. I will get ahold of you, okay? Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Item number five, discussion and possible action on ordinance 2016-422, an ordinance amending section 2-141 Board of Review, repealing sections 2-291 to 2-296 Emergency Medical Services Commission, amending section 2-322 Parks and Recreation Commission, amending section 2-352 Tourism Development Committee, amending section 2-374 Community Development Authority, and repealing sections 2-381 to 2-388 Economic Development Committee of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milton.
Thank you. This this item is on the agenda for the for the third reading of the ordinance. The last, the two previous times this is brought forward, there was amendments made to the ordinance on the floor of the council meeting. Those amendment, those amendments have been incorporated, including those that were suggested at the last meeting to add the Milton House Executive Director as a member of the tourism committee. So with that amendment, the item is is now up to date and could be voted upon unless there are additional changes. But at this point, it could be adopted.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2016-422, waive the third and adopt. This is the third?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Going once, going twice. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. I know this was a little bit of a tedious job, but we got it done. Yay, council. Discussion and possible action on MABUS Resolution 2016-30.
This was an item that was forwarded to me by interim chief Lucas from the Milton Joint Fire Department. Based on the the information that he provided me, in the past, the fire commission would simply adopt a resolution to indicate that they would be a part of MABUS. But apparently the rules have changed, or at least they're asking for the rules to change. And when I say they, I mean the county. And they would like each municipality who participates in MABUS, meaning the City of Milton and the Town of Milton, to adopt their own separate resolutions. So that's what this item is. It is a resolution to be adopted to, so that the City of Milton would be included in MABUS, which is the emergency response. I can't remember the exact actor, maybe Scott can tell me, but...
Mutual aid?
Mutual aid.
Box alarm?
Yeah.
System.
So this would be the resolution for the City of Milton and then the town will adopt a similar resolution as well.
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number 2016-30.
Just a resolution.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the resolution is passed.
I have a question.
It's too late.
I have a question for Al. Will we, will we be doing this on a regular basis in January when that whole box system is set up with the chiefs? Or is this something that we will?
I'm not sure.
What are you anticipating?
I'm not sure if it'll be an annual resolution or not. Scott, do you have an idea?
I, I don't think so. I think this is a, this is a system that, that, that has some flexibility to it. And, you know, the, the people involved in MABUS planning can make changes. I would anticipate this is a one-time resolution. I don't think this needs to be reoccurring unless there's language changes, just like tonight, that have to get made.
Okay, discussion and possible action on Resolution 2016-31, authorizing the submittal of a 2017 urban forestry grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, I'm at the parks meeting last night, Parks and Recreation. They requested that, well, they unanimously recommended that council adopt the resolution. This is just for a, to send in for a forestry grant. It's a competitive grant, so not everyone gets them. But if there's enough money in the state funds, we're eligible for one. It'd be for training, tree replacement, updating ordinances. But, but it needs a resolution from the city council to be able to apply for this. This would be for the 2017 budget. And if we do get the grant, most of our expenses just come out of our labor and equipment use as a, that's what our half of it usually is. So it usually doesn't cost us any more. We don't have to budget money to support this grant.
Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Now, are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item eight, discussion of possible action regarding budget meeting calendar.
I have before you some potential options for public hearings and publications of the budget and also a kickoff discussion meeting. And I've talked to a couple of you and you won't actually be here on October 4th. So we were kicking around some other dates. We could kick it up one week or we could kick it back a week. September 29th is a Thursday night. I don't know what that looks like for people.
I have football.
Yep. Or kick it to the 10th?
Will that give us, I mean?
On Monday.
We're good on time. Okay.
The one thing with this budget, similar to past years and even more so after some lengthy discussions today with the Department of Revenue, we aren't going to have a ton of latitude in terms of being able to increase the tax rate. So when we're looking at the levy, which is the part that this body can control, there's, we'll give you what that maximum number is and we'll have to work backwards from there. So it'll be a little different than in previous years where we've talked about, you know, what can we add or what can we subtract. It'll be, here's the number and we'll have to work backwards to that number.
In previous years, the trash pickup fee has also been flexible. So I want to know what the trash pickup fee will be.
Yeah, I haven't heard from Johns yet. They haven't, they have until October 1st. Last year there was, they, they asked for the contract, I think allows for no more than 3% increase, so.
I want to be updated on how that's going. Thank you.
Yep. So we can, we can plan on a special meeting on October 10th, on that Monday, if that works for everyone, for the kickoff. And then the, what time, I guess, would be the next question? Wait, is there court that night?
Courts usually the first, isn't it? Isn't it? Or actually, court's usually the third. Well?
Howie says it's usually the first and third. So I guess the 10th, we'd be okay. I hadn't...
This would be good.
Does that work?
Or later. I mean, I just can't, I don't foresee being able to do it earlier.
And then does that mean that we're, you've got here for the budget workshops, fifth, sixth?
Yeah, I just threw out, I, I just put dates down. There's nothing, there's nothing magic about any of those dates. We were just trying to, pretty much, we're just trying to structure things. So maybe we wouldn't have to do as many special meetings. We could just have some budget workshops after a council meeting.
Right.
And we could even do one on, we can even kick this thing into November, too. I mean, we, we aren't going to approve the budget till sometime in November, so.
Right.
And we aren't going to have all the numbers from the state till late October, so.
So we're not...
And I know there's some conferences and stuff in the middle of October, too, that people are going to be gone for.
So the 10th is going to be the only day for that week, then? That's what my question is. Or do we need to go the 10th and the 13th, or the 10th and the 12th?
No, I mean, the, the idea of the kickoff meeting will be to kind of provide a macro overview of where we are with the budget. There won't be any new information between the 10th and, you know, likely a week or so afterwards. So it would probably be, it wouldn't be the best use of our time to meet a bunch of times early on because the, because we won't have the final numbers. And that's, in years past, that has been a little frustrating that, to the, to the council, that, you know, we have a study session and then, and then I send an email out the next day saying, okay, everything we discussed last night is now moot because we got this number in. And then we discuss that. And then the next day we get an email saying, oh, okay, everything we discussed is moot because we got this number in. So kicking it, I shouldn't say kicking it, but having the kickoff meeting similar to what we did last year, where I had a PowerPoint presentation and kind of talked about the macro budget and where things are looking at 2017, then allowing those numbers to kind of trickle in, may, is, is the approach that I think makes the most sense. So having budget workshops in late October is certainly fine because that's when, the later we go, the more concrete the numbers become as far as, as far as those variables that come in from the state that we don't have any control over. What we would be then discussing at that point are the items that we do have control over, you know, which would be general fund spending and anything of that nature. Or if we're looking at, you know, revenue increases or service cuts or things of that nature. So I just want to be, I just want to be, you know, use our time wisely.
So we could have a, we could have a budget discussion at the council meeting on the 18th, because that would be a week later. And then we could have something on November 1st agenda and see where we're, see where we're at.
Yeah.
And then from there, we just have to choose option one. If we went with that idea of having some budget discussions on the 18th of October and the 1st of November, I would think that we would be looking at option two. I know last year was the desire of this, of the council to not have the public hearing and the approval of the budget on the same exact night.
Correct. So yeah, that would be option number two.
Option one also does that. The numbers will be a little more preliminary under option one, but just because we publish something doesn't put it in concrete.
Well, so the longer, the longer you wait, like for option two, the more firm your numbers are, which would make option two more reasonable?
Right, but it would also create another special meeting, so.
It would be after Thanksgiving, so that's where we would formally approve the budget.
The public hearing would be the week of Thanksgiving. Whereas option one, the public hearing would be on a regular council night. And by November 15th, we'll have, we should have, should have most of our numbers.
And I think, I think what Dan and I have discussed is, no matter what option we choose to go with, it's not, nothing's set in stone. If, if we decide that, or, you know, if the numbers come in quickly and we decide that, you know, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, we certainly could amend that. The purpose of bringing this forward was just so people could kind of, you know, understand where, where we're looking at in public hearing, where we're looking at adoption, late November. Last year, we didn't adopt the budget until December. So, you know, there's, there's wiggle room even within these, but we wanted to just kind of have everybody kind of look at their calendars so we could learn things like, like Ryan explained to us tonight, he was, you know, he's going to be gone for a little bit. So this is really more for discussion purposes and, and we're not locked in to anything, but at least gives you an idea of...
We are locked in. We do have to decide probably sooner than later what, when we want to approve the budget for publication because the statute's, given that we have a weekly paper, we essentially have to publish the public hearing three weeks in advance. So that's why these are all programmed the way they are in terms of trying to keep them on Tuesday nights and to meet the deadlines that the courier has for advertisements, which are usually Friday of, they're due Friday to be published in the following week's paper.
Option two provides us the greatest flexibility with probably the most reasonable timeline.
I only have concerns about that 22nd. And just because historically, it seems like we even don't have a lot of committee meetings the week of Thanksgiving because people are getting ready for their family gatherings and...
Which is why we put the other one where we have the, where it basically sticks to just standard nights other than the official approval of the budget, which would be a special meeting after Thanksgiving. And like Al said, it, you know, it, either way, the numbers that get published, either that last week in October or the first week in November, are still going to be pretty preliminary. I don't see a lot changing between those two.
I mean, we can be flexible, so, I mean, don't get all worked up over meeting Thanksgiving. It's probably not going to happen.
But I know last year, there were a few council members that were gone the week of Thanksgiving. And so that Tuesday, I can't remember what we did for the public hearing. I just know it wasn't the, should, prior to last year, I think we'd always done the public hearing and the approval of the budget on the same night.
Right.
And we tried to deviate from that. So that way, if there was major concerns from the citizens, it didn't look like it was a rubber stamp, so to speak, on the budget that it, that you had a week at least to digest what was said or not said.
So should we, we'll just plan on, you know, the first session being October 10th and then we'll go from there. Does that seem reasonable to everybody? At 6:00.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, general items.
I have some general items. In conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day, October 7th, the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce will be having a local manufacturing matters campaign, October 3rd to October 7th. And that will be to educate the public on what our local manufacturers offer and how they affect our economic development. To date, it's, we're still in the works with it to date. October 5th, there will be a tour at Charter NEX. And then October 7th, there will be a tour at Air Products. And we should all just be watching the chamber website and the courier for any of the other tours that could hopefully be scheduled. I think this is a great thing for our community. I really do. And Lisa's not, well, this is a committee report, so I won't say that. The, also, I wanted to let you know that the Milton City Council is invited to attend a short video presentation about our Wallyfest 2016 at Jakes Junction Pub tomorrow from 5 to 7. I reminded them that we also have a fire commission meeting tomorrow night. And they, she said that it was only about a 20-minute video, that the actual, the core committee would be more than likely the ones that would be staying later. And I can also tell you that Wallyfest 2017 has officially been scheduled for the first weekend in June. And then I also just wanted to remind everybody that we have our Crossridge Park Annual Prairie Seed Collection on Saturday, October 15th. It's from 10 to noon this year. And we've, we are anticipating that we get a pretty good crowd with that. I, I did find some, just some little tidbits of information that I would just like to share. And that, that is, so far, we have in Crossridge Park created our prairie to the size of about six to eight acres. It's one of the things that the citizens who go out there and walk enjoy. And we're hoping that we get a lot of people for the prairie seed collection. You just need to dress properly. And I've given everybody a copy of a flyer so you can take it wherever you're going and post it and share the information.
Okay, thank you. Any other general items? The next meeting is Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Team building exercise. Did you get the, like, the little email beforehand? Did you? Did you? Did you? Did you? Did you email us? Uh huh.
I got it.
I mean, I only sent it to you.
Oh, you sent it to me?
Tomorrow again.
I thought you sent it to everybody.
Sorry, I didn't make my wishes clear. So I have Al forwarded to everybody because I was trying to be quick.
I just said you sent it to everybody. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So, after all the research I did, too. So it's three things tonight. It's three things. So if you think about your whole life, like all the areas of your life, like work, volunteering, city council, family, like all of those areas, can you think of three things that you wish you were spending more time on? And Al already has his three picked.
Because he got the mail.
Yeah.
Because he got the email, that's...
Yes, because he's got preferential treatment. So Al can go first.
I had one question, though. Is, are, is, was it three things that we, we can do or three things that we wish we would have done, or?
I think, um...
I didn't, I didn't know.
Three, just three, three things you wish you were spending more time on, like right now that you, you know, that are important to you, that you're, you're not, for whatever reason.
I wish I was spending more time with my, my son and wife. I wish I had more time to read. And I wish I had more time to travel.
Okay, so that's exactly what we're talking about here. So, do you want to go to the left or to the right? Okay, it'll be Maxine. Linda said left. Good job. You're very intuitive, Maxine. Jeremy?
Jeremy wished Maxine had more time to sell for him.
I have a wedding dress that's going to need to be altered, just saying, once I buy it. Jeremy? Dave? We need a city council retreat so Dave can take pictures. And we will get you there. Dan?
Spending time with family, traveling. When they win. And... Go to, go to three World Series games at the end of October.
Attorney Schrader?
More time with friends and family. Say, more time fishing. I was going to say more time drinking beer, but I already said more time fishing, so.
Allegedly fishing.
And more time doing non-legal writing.
So you're in the middle of a book? Is that what you're saying? You're writing a book about us? I bet it's about us. We want to cut. That's all I'm saying.
I'm sure the names will have been changed to protect the innocent.
Howie?
Let's see, exercise more for the half, half marathon this spring. More family time. And let's see, I already went bear hunting, so I'd go with the more fishing and just more coaching in sports, so.
Did you shoot a bear?
Yep.
Are you going to bring us some bear sausage or something?
It's mostly hamburger.
Hey, we'll take some meatballs. Chief of Police.
Family, as the rest of you will probably say as well.
As the rest of you will probably say as well. Um, more time, um, one of the things I miss about my last location was, uh, being in the Dubuque Corral. So, wish I had a little more time doing the, the group singing thing. Who knows, that might happen again someday. Um, and then travel, yeah, I wish, I wanna go back to Maui so bad, so that's on the list.
Linda? Thank you, Linda. Nancy? Thank you. Thank you. Elena?
Um, it's gonna follow suit, um, just more time with my, my family, my kids, my mother in particular. Um, more time for me and yoga, um, and traveling.
So we're gonna do group yoga next week, next time, for team building. Thank you, Elena. Um, I wanna spend right now just more time getting ready to move. Um, more time with my mom up on the farm, and I wish I had, um, more time, um, just to work on some more city stuff that I have in mind for all of us to do, so, um, you know, stay tuned, I'll find time for that, too. So, thank you all for the great team building exercise. You know, that was interesting, and one of the, um, all of you got the top ten habits of highly effective councils, and team building was, like, on that top ten, so, good job, you guys, you're, you're working on the top. And, and our next team building exercise will be your top ten things that, uh, you love being on city council for, or not. Um, okay, mayor and older person reports, I'm gonna do the mayor report, because I want y'all to know it's bulky trash pickup today. There's lots of free stuff on my terrace, so, you know, free shopping, I'm, hopefully, it'll be gone by tomorrow. And we, the, uh, the mayor will be doing a proclamation for the manufacturers' week, um, so that'll be great, and it'll be good to, uh, review the Wally Fest, because that's, uh, that was our new festival, and I, I'm really excited to see, uh, the review of that. Um, my, and you know what, my neighbor's sidewalk, they got new sidewalk today, and they were so pleased that they didn't have to pay for it. Like, that is a service that, you know, that we offer as a city, and I was talking to a friend of mine that does not live in Milton, and lives in another city in Wisconsin, and she was telling me how much money they had to pay for bulky trash pickup, for, like, everything, and then, you know, I don't know that ours, you know, maybe it'll, our trash fees will increase at some point. But what we have for services, I, I mean, I'm so impressed with and appreciative, and I know that Al has talked about this before, but when I was talking to her, I was just like, oh, you have to pay for that, you have to pay for that, oh, wow, I was just, you know, we should be really grateful, we, we have it pretty good in the city of Milton for our size, so. That's my, um, my grateful, uh, mayor report. So, um, Dave, you got anything? Jeremy?
I don't know, except, I think.
Great, great. Maxine? Ryan?
Uh, finished handing out the plaques for the National Reserve for Historic Places, took a couple places here in town, and, uh, took some nice pictures, uh. All right, Rebecca?
Yes.
Um, so those are all handed out, and I've already seen at least one already up on a building. Didn't take long to get that up. Um, also, I know that the Twilight Tours were a very big success this year at the Milton House, I mean, they were, uh, every tour was packed all the way till ten o'clock at night, and they added a tour at ten o'clock that was three-quarters full as well, and they were turning people away.
That's exciting.
So the place was packed for Twilight Tours, which is great. Um, and we will be doing the Civil War event again next year, I do have a date, but I'm gonna save that announcement for later time, but, uh, it'll be in May.
It's in suspense.
Yeah, suspense, but we will be doing that again next year, we already started the planning, at least myself and Carrie, and we'll be bringing the group back together.
Perfect. Nancy?
On, uh, historic tours, I took the, the walking tour, which was very well done, I'm very glad they got Doug Welshakart, because it's, it is a long walk to go around that whole square. Uh, it was very interesting to, uh, hear his perspective, because he, he was more courier-oriented, and he would remember the news from the different locations. So that was, and you couldn't have picked a better day, it was gorgeous, you have to do that again.
Did you by chance bump into the Pokemon tour that was going through at the same time?
I didn't see, I saw, uh, Carrie walking with one kid, that was all the kids that I saw. I, I may have timed that wrong.
And I know that Linda has a report on something that happened this past weekend with the library.
Oh, yes, yes, I am very happy to say that, um, Ashley Kunkel put together the very first library lobe. It was a fundraiser intended for the teen books in the library, and we had about seventy people that participated. It was, and of course, Sunday morning, it was a beautiful weekend for that, we had a great turnout, and thanks for everybody and their support.
Okay, staff reports, I don't have my list, so, I mean, I have to remember the staff by memory. Um, we'll start with Howie.
Um, this will probably be the last week for the Splash Park, we have to close it down sometime. Um, through the weekend, we'll keep it open yet, so. Um, let's see, their projects, they're working on the ethanol driveway to re, it's not their driveway, we just call it that, 'cause it's the street next to their driveway, so. Um, the parking lot in Merchant Row has started, that's supposed to take two weeks for the north parking lot to get done. Um, Chicago Street probably won't start until, for two more weeks. Brush collection is done for this round, there's one more week in the middle of October. Uh, the, the dates are on the website, but it's around the twentieth, so, for, that's an extra week this year. Um, leaf collection doesn't start till October first. Um, and we did get the CivMec, the insurance company, did give us a grant to do some park improvements for some safety and some ADA things, so.
Thank you very much.
That was like five thousand dollars that they gave back, so, for a rebate, so.
Nice. Dan?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, I would agree with Dan, most of the conversations that we've been having as of late have been budget-related. Um, you know, we continue to get, uh, little bits and pieces of news from the state. Um, every time we, well, we've gotten about, for every, for every one good piece of news, we've gotten about ten bad pieces of news, and up to and including, I wrote to you all on Friday, that we finally got a good piece of news, and then today, we got news that someone negated that good piece of news, so. Um, things keep changing, um, it's, as we've discussed a number of times, this will probably be one of the most difficult budget years. Um, so it's gonna be, uh, there'll be a lot of tough decisions ahead, unfortunately. It's never easy, but this one will be even more difficult.
Just don't, don't take away bulky trash pickup, I mean, just don't do it.
That, that's not part of the life of something.
I know, I know.
That won't be on the table, all right?
That's good, that's a huge therapy for everybody in the city of Milton. Elena?
Um, in-person absentee voting will start on Monday at eight o'clock.
Woo-hoo. Chief?
Uh, Milton East, I think, is going well, the, I think we've, we've passed the learning curve, and people are learning the new patterns and the new places to go. And, uh, we'll be making some parking changes, um, just some minor ones with setting up some new no-parking zones, and you'll be seeing that on a future agenda, because that'll take some ordinance changes to get that to happen, and Howie and I are in the works, um, trying to get that figured out. Um, if you've seen my news release, and Channel Three had me on air tonight, too, uh, we've had quite a string of thefts over this last weekend, about the last four days, and someone is, um, doing what in another agency we called car shopping, and finding things that they can use in other people's cars, and started actually smashing windows and stealing things over this last, uh, weekend. So, we're putting the word out, um, it's, as I put in my news release, it's difficult to catch them in the act, and it's also difficult to find the suspect based upon the very, very little evidence that they leave behind. So our best bet is to use the public as our force multiplier, and if somebody sees something, I hope they call, and we're gonna do our best, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I don't.
Did you, did you by any chance advertise a phone number to call, 'cause it is slightly confusing? Do you want us to call nine-one-one? What do you want?
I think, I think in this, a, a crime in progress is a nine-one-one call.
I, this was a straight question?
Yeah, yeah, so, it, again, it, I never talk in absolutes, it, it, it depends. So if it's a crime in progress, it's a nine-one-one call, if it's, hey, I, I think, you know, I might have seen something three hours ago that I wanna let you know about, um, that's probably just a call to the, the nine-one-one center on their non-emergency line. Two-two-four-four, thank you.
Yeah, it just is, you can, kinda think, yeah, which number am I supposed to use, and this is, is, you know, I, I would hope that when you, um, ask for assistance, you put a number in.
I can certainly do that, yeah.
All right, that's it, motion to adjourn.
Say him.
All those in favor? All opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody, see you in two weeks.